Okay, I guess Zoom wasn't online, so just to get everybody up. The only thing we've done is pledge allegiance and then we have public comment. One person commented in the room. There isn't anybody else. Is there anybody on Zoom? Who wants to make a public comment? Please raise your hand. Okay. Yeah, Aaron. Okay, I'll just repeat the rules real quick. You have three minutes. Keep it to county business. Civil and do not do personal attacks. Okay, Aaron, go ahead.
Thank you, Commissioners. And real quick, just, I don't know if this was already asked, but want to get an update for the public of when the ASAs will be signed with a date certain. I know that the timeline's coming up, but there's rumors swirling around in the community. And I know what we've heard is some things have moved forward for Boardman. But on the contract and that, what's the timeline? And hopefully there's no holdup. It should be just from the city's recommendation. It's just focus only on the ASA. Make it clean, as was mentioned at the last meeting, like an IGA. We're not doing an IGA, by the way. But let's get that going so that it can get on the street and quiet the rustling of the winds. Thank you.
Aaron?
Yes, sir.
Did I understand you correctly that the City of Oregon is not interested in signing the IGA that's been requested by the Morrow County Health District?
We've, if you remember, Commissioner, we've already signed and did a resolution supporting Morrow County Health District and also another one for the fire department. Recall that. So we're not doing anything different. And by the way, it's illegal for any government jurisdiction to try to persuade people to vote into favor of a certain thing. Elected officials can go out and lobby and talk to people. But as an organization, you can't say, hey, we're gonna lock in and you gotta vote or move a certain way. That is illegal. That is election interference and we will stay out of it, per legal counsel.
Thank you for your clarification.
Welcome. Any other questions? Justin, do you give thumbs up there? Was our lawyer pretty square on?
I would, I guess, for the conversations going on for the IGA and what's being asked for of it, I don't know if I would agree with the aspect of the language in that aspect. But of course, there is no, you can't force anyone to do anything. If it assesses with an agreement with the Health District, that's one thing, and the benefit they're asking for. And if a community decides not to do something that's up to the community itself individually, so definitely not something that the county has ever required or forced to be done. But certain services are needed and that's requested by one party, then maybe that's something that's going on. But I guess I would disagree somewhat, but it's not really an issue that the county is forcing or anything else, I believe.
Thank you, Justin, because we're not gonna, we don't wanna get in any crossways. We appreciate that Morrow County has chosen who's to be the ASA provider here. So we just wanna see that agreement, get those contracts hammered out. If you need assistance from the city to say, let's clean up the language. I think most of it is, Matt has shared that in the briefing. It's pretty clear, but I know that there's some haggling going on, but that's gotta be set aside. We're here to serve people. Thank you.
Thank you, Aaron.
Okay, is there anybody else on Zoom? Wants to make a comment? Please raise your hand. Anybody else? So we'll move on to open the agendas. Anything you wanna add?
No.
Next up, we have our administrators' report. Now, we'll give that to us.
Yes, a few items. The ASA, we have an update a little bit later down as business items, so I'll forego that at the current time. A couple of their items with the circuit court, the geotech has been performed. We're waiting for that report, expecting that to occur this next week. Environmental, we've been processing on that. We're looking for some background information, which the port was able to provide some of the information just yesterday. We're hoping to keep the environmental a type one assessment, right? Type two will go into quite a bit more. And so we're just trying to get as much information so we don't have to have that recommendation. We're hoping to have all that wrapped up by the, I was hoping by next week, but likely it'll be by the end of the month. Because we've just had some delays on getting some information on that. So, but that is proceeding and look forward to bringing those reports back to the Commission for consideration at that time. One other thing. Of course, the fires that we have, the Lone Rock fires down on the south end of our county, and you know, it's bridged. Gilliam County, our own, major impacts from air quality and such. We've been in close conversations with our emergency manager, who's coordinating with the state fire marshal and other resources there. We are standing up our EOC, our Emergency Operations Centers today. And we will be anticipating having twice a day updates that we can push out to the Commission and to the public in order to allow people to know what the latest is on that. Right now, they've been kind of relying on the sheriff's office, social media account, but we'd like to make sure we get official stances out there. One thing of note, we do have some level three evacuation orders. It, this is impacting the county facilities, both the OHV camp and Anson Wright campgrounds are closed. We have canceled reservations through at least Monday. The level three extends past 207 for about three mile stretch, so encompasses quite a bit of the OHV. And of course, Anson Wright's on the, on the west side of 207, so it's included there. I'm really hoping we can get some, some good winds, some favorable temperatures. And you know, it'd be nice if we got a little moisture. I don't, I'm not holding, holding my breath on that, though. We've, we've got quite a bit of the fire crews out there in the thousands. And it's impressive to see some of the coordination on that. Right now, we are looking to stage more firefighters down at the fairgrounds. And we're looking to open up our exhibit hall and allow them to have some air conditioning so they can get a little break when they're off the fire lines. We had lost one structure in the fire. It was not a residence or a cabin. I don't know what, you know, probably a shed of some kind. It hasn't been released to us, but there's only been one, one shelter lost in Morrow County at this time. And they're working feverishly to try to, try to keep others out from, from burning. But it's, it's a big fire. And it's not anywhere near containment stages. So, but hopefully we'll have some more official statements and information relayed with, with the EOC going online today. The final thing is this Monday, we released a press release for Morrow County receiving an Achievement and Community Engagement Award for Rural Transportation Equity Project. This was awarded through the through the Oregon Department Land Conservation and Development Department. And they, you know, looking for ways of how do we engage and make sure people are, are equitably treated. This project was, was coordinated with the, with several different partners within our county, the planning department and our transit system. And really focused on the creation of a survey in both English and Spanish, putting out to you know, high demand populations and those that are usually less represented to try to get some understanding of what, where the best route should be. We received some great response, particularly for our population. The state was very, very impressed by the, the return rate on the surveys. And it helped create and modify some of the routes that we have going through Boardman. And with that, the state acknowledged and provided us this award. I think it's great kudos to Tammy and Ben and our partners that helped us do that survey. So just a really nice award. And it's the little things, just reaching out and trying to make sure we serve all of the population here in Morrow County. So a nice thing. That's, that's my update for right now. Like I said, the ASA will have further comments later on in the business section.
Good. Good, Matt. Consent agenda. Jeff, you guys, do you want to take out?
No, I'll move for approval of the consent agenda.
One second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried. Well, at this time, I might, I might add that Commissioner Roy Drago isn't with us today. He has a planned absence, so it'd be just the two of us. Okay, with that, we'll move into business items. Columbia Development Authority quota report is going on?
No, he wasn't able to make it today.
So next, we'll move up to Community Council Solutions quota report. Kimberly, since she's here. Hello.
All right, I put provided Valerie an agenda. Yeah, I feel like last time I met with you, we talked about, did we talk about the deflection program last time, Justin, I met with them? It all happened so quickly. So I put these slides in in case I hadn't shared them prior. It's a nice overview of what deflection is. Do you want me to give you a recap of deflection, House bill?
No.
Great. The next document is the budget that Morrow County sent in. Jessica Rose sent that in. So it accounts for the full 150,000 that Morrow County received. That's a biennial amount. However, the county isn't receiving it until, until now. So there's 150,000 to spend for the last year of this biennium. And then next year, it'll be about 75,000 a year for the 2005, 2000, or sorry, 2025, 2027 biennium. With those funds, the group was hoping that Morrow County would contract with CCS to provide the deflection program that Morrow County put together. Justin, I don't know if you've briefed the Commissioners on what our program will look like, but I can do that.
Sure, if you want to. I think we already talked some in the past. It hasn't changed as much about trying to work with a joint group with Yumitilla County somewhat, but hiring an employee to help with the, the work. You can go and talk about some. I think we explained it a little bit before, so.
So the Yumitilla and Morrow Counties program will mirror each other. They'll be yeah, they're gonna mirror each other. CCS will hire a deflection program supervisor that will supervise the Morrow County pure navigator. There'll be a couple of pure navigators in Yumitilla, one in Grant, one in Gillum. That supervisor will supervise all three of them. The upside to that is that when people are out on vacation or out sick or maternity labor, things like that, we'll be able to use navigators from other counties to provide that support so that no county will feel a significant absence. And the pure navigators are gonna connect with those individuals who are, who qualify for the program. So generally, we're talking about a first time offender who makes a bad decision to, to be, I don't know, to use. Maybe we can just be talking about somebody who's guilty with, the example that I use is you get in the car with somebody and you don't know that there's some dope in the backseat of the car and the person gets pulled over. And both people in the car say, it's not mine. Officers often don't wanna get into a big discussion on whose it really is, so they cite both people. One person, the driver, should have a lot of charges. They're not gonna be eligible for deflection at all. That other person, you, who just hopped in the car, you get this charge, you would be eligible for deflection. And the upside to that is that if you complete the program, Justin has the ability to clear your slate, so to speak. So we're not talking about a lot of individuals. Most people are gonna go through the traditional route of conditional release. Jail sanctions, probation, all of that. But for those individuals that qualify, they're gonna get a lot of support and resources to assist them. So that's just like a 5,000 foot overview. I miss anything.
No, I think that's good. And we're still, I think the key thing too is it was, you know, done so quickly and really CCS, I would, I appreciate, we're saying, helping a lot. Jesse Rose, trying to help get something together in a very short notice. So this is the framework, but it's not a practice. It's gonna be one of those things that we're gonna be learning on the go somewhat, how quick it is. Again, this is not like normal legislation we're used to seeing where maybe we'll have a buildup process about, you know, maybe it takes six, a year or so. You're all ready for this. Have everyone have their plans in place. Then a lot changes. This is September 1st type of thing. And it's just pretty quick when, it's not like the funding's here already. It's like all of a sudden, oh, you've had it for, you know, here's the money. You're in advance, get things planned to start on a certain date. It is, really, really rush it to try to get it in place is the idea. So there'll be changes. We'll communicate that with everyone. That's, that's where we are. So that's the plan so far.
Yeah. And our local law enforcement partners are completely on board. We had a lot of meetings at the last minute and scurrying, so. Before I talk about a potential contract with CCS, I wanna mention the opioid program. Kevin, I don't know if you had a chance to read my email, but you might recall a while ago, we discussed the opioid funds that are coming tomorrow county and the Commissioners asked if I would work with the advisory board to identify some good uses for those funds. The Commissioner Drago sat in on the deflection program meetings on several of them. And we talked about the opioid funds being a good fit for the deflection program. And the county, there was discussion of hiring some additional FTE for pure navigators. The 150,000, 75,000 a year doesn't cover everything. But if we can add the opioid funds in, it does cover everything. And Commissioner Drago supported that. The advisory board supports it. In your, I did not put this in your packet. I had sent it to Kevin. I'm not sure to date what funds Morrow County has received, but roughly, I mean, I know what they did receive up to a certain point. It looks like
We may have received a lot of payments since the last update. I think we haven't got as many places here, but there hasn't been any.
I mean, so there was, so there's, I think there was about 27,000 that came in in 2022. There's about 24,000 that came in in 23. There could have been an additional payment. All told, for Morrow County for 2022 and 2023, you're supposed to have received about 100,000. Yeah, 27,000 for 2022 and 76,000 for 2023. And then every year thereafter, roughly somewhere between 20 and 25,000 up until 2033, when it drops down to 17,000 for several years. And then it drops down to 11,000 and then those payments in, in 2038. So we're going out quite a ways here. So the groups, the consensus of the group was if the county was comfortable to contract those funds with CCS to make the, the deflection program work with a full-time pure navigator and supervisor and potentially adding some additional FTE. But I can't determine exactly what the FTE is until I know what is sitting out there for the opioid fund. So all of that said, the question for the county, for the Commissioners is are you comfortable with putting the opioid funds that you're receiving towards the deflection program? And then comfortable with Justin and I working together to develop a contract? Or I think it would be both for the deflection funds because the county is the fiscal agent and these funds are going to the county.
I could offer clarification. We're, we're clearly not the fiscal agent. That was I tried to clarify that when we applied for it. Our auditors and I have reviewed the grant documents. We're the recipient, the governmental funds, so we can't act in just a fiduciary capacity. We have, county bears a responsibility for the administration and oversight of the funds.
Yeah, that's what, my understanding, so that you're the fiscal agent, right?
No, we're the recipient. Fiscal agent would be, we just hold the funds for another party. There's, there's a pretty big distinction. And where the ultimate responsibility and oversight of the funds lies.
In the, in the initial application, there was two parts to it. One was who's applying and who's the fiscal agent. So sorry if my language wasn't great, but it all went in with Morrow County applying and Morrow County being the fiscal agent. So whatever Kevin says, I agree.
Well, to me, it's as long as Kevin, it's good, you know. I think the program seemed to me to be, you know, somewhere around, I don't have a thought of the guys. Philosophically combined, is that kind of what your question is?
Yeah, the question is, yeah, are you comfortable pairing the opioid funds with the deflection program and then developing one contract? The, for the deflection program. I think the contractor would reference both the opioid funds as well as the deflection funds. I don't, I assume I would work with Justin and put together the contract, but I don't know if there's somebody else doing contracts for the county now or not.
Yes, I know when we were discussing before, that was the, again, it's gone pretty quick here still. And waiting for almost verification from the state. Here's the funding, exactly. Here's how much. We submitted it. I'm not sure if we received it back saying, yep, it's been accepted or approved. Sure, it will be. Commissioner Drago, when we had one of our conversations, was on board with the idea also trying to utilize some of that deflection funding, what's available. Possibly help cover costs of that full-time Morrow County person who would be helping with the deflection program. So probably being a CCS person, trying to utilize the resources that way. Instead of a county, full-time employee, we don't have that to help use those funds. And so that's always been the idea. Only not the idea, but what we've talked about so far.
Some of the funds, though, I did keep back. This is an important distinction. It is reflected in the budget. Jessica Rose is the coordinator. And she is a, is she a county employee or contracted with the county?
Contracted with the county.
So I did take a rough guess at what I thought her hours would be as the coordinator. And identified those in the budget that she's paid through the county. So you, those dollars would not be included in the contract. If you get 150,000, I think it's roughly 10,000 for Jessica's time that I pulled out. So for the deflection funds, it would be, it would be 140,000.
No, I think the concept of using opioid money to help just look forward to, you know, just come up with the contracts.
And we'll verify also the process. I know one thing that we're always making sure of is that legal process for the procurement, right? It still makes the most sense to go to a certain group, but the idea of making sure we cover all those bases, that there's not any procurement issues of how we contracted who with and making sure that is done. So while there's a contract to work on, but making sure we cover those bases. Something that I know I work on, Kevin definitely is always on top of it, making sure we do it the right way and trying to. And so the plan would be for, once we look into it, probably be me, but Kevin also just to make sure of the process. And with our group, I think still too. I think Commissioner Drago's still been a big part of that. Have, wanted to have him involved too before anything gets brought back before the board. It won't just be me. I might be working on staff, working on it, but at the end of the day, still kind of for the board commissioners for final. And so we'll also be working on it.
She's been doing most of that.
Sure, could I ask a question?
Sure.
Forgive me for not knowing this. I know there's a big rush. We had to get that, the contract taken care of. Is there a deadline for getting our program in place?
Yes. So the first, in the first contract or in the first application iteration, you had to identify if you were gonna do a planning grant or an implementation grant. Morrow County chose an implementation grant, so that means that you're gonna go live September 1 with the program.
Okay.
Yeah.
We'll be working pretty hard in August then. Excellent. I just couldn't remember that, so thank you.
I just would put out there that completely respect the procurement process and if there's some steps that need to be added. Or, you know, if it needs to be an RFP and CCS needs to reply, I, I get that. So just wanna put that out there. And I'm also good with a handshake, that if the contract isn't done by September 1, but we've been given the green light, then that's fine. If, if it looks for whatever reason, like CCS is gonna get the contract, but we can't start on September 1, do need to know that sooner than later because I'm not gonna advertise. And we would also need to notify the CJC that we're not gonna be able to go live September 1. And I think we have to give them an updated date. So just, I do respect processes and understand that and just trust the county to communicate with me if we end up needing a date other than September 1 or if it needs to be an RFP.
We do have a few logistical hurdles to jump through. One of those is our, our lead council's going to be out for about two weeks in July and August. And, but if we can work through Greg on the, on the structure of it.
And also my laptop, it's one of those things I can definitely still work on. Be one of ways. That's not a problem for sure. But yeah, absolutely.
And realistically, I'd love to get this before the, the board for the August 7th meeting. And just with everything that's up in the air, just get it taken care of. So we don't have to worry about slipping into that second year in August. And I do have a planned meeting with CCS for Thursday to introduce Vincent. We can go through some of those details then as well.
Sorry that it kind of feels last minute, but it's, I promised that I haven't missed an opportunity to bring this for you in the final iteration. This is, we just sent in the budget September, or no, July 3rd, what I think was when it was due. Maybe it was, I can't remember. It was last week.
Yeah, yeah, it was pretty quick, yeah.
It was last week. So I guess it could have been here last Wednesday, but I didn't know if they were gonna ask for updates. So far, they have not asked for any updates that I'm aware of from Jesse.
And we will, since this is with the contracted group that we're doing this, I do wanna explore if we have to follow RFP rules specifically or if we can exempt this out on that. Personally, I think we can do some form of single source if nothing else. But we'll be looking into that and we'll let you know. We do have a special meeting next week, so I'd, I'd like to be able to allow you to make a determination on that next week. That's okay.
Yeah, I think that, I'll speak for Dave also, but I think that we're just looking for staff to work with Kimberly, make it happen.
Yeah. I think you all are goal oriented. You know where we wanna get to. We're gonna do the best for the people, that's what.
Of course, like you say, follow the process.
Yes.
Okay, next item, zero suicide assessment. We've talked about this before a little bit. So Morrow County is a zero suicide county. It's a framework for applying best practice standards around how you deliver care to people who are at risk of suicide. It also extends out into the community of how you educate and inform the community on how to have conversations with people and families who are struggling. Either with an individual who's at risk of suicide or on the backside, families who have experienced a death by suicide in their family. How to, how to work through that. I wanted to bring this assessment in front of you. I'm not gonna go through every page. I promise. This assessment that is done by OHSU looks at the seven domains of zero suicide within an organization. The seven domains are referenced on the fourth page, well, on a couple of different pages actually, but transition, improve, identify, lead, train, treat, and engage. This is the same assessment that we have done. We're looking inside or under the hood of CCS since 2019, every year with the exception of Since two thousand and nineteen, every year with the exception of twenty twenty. And I think we were, I, I don't know, I don't want it to sound like an excuse. I just, I feel like COVID caught up with us and staffing was at an all-time low and we were just struggling to get by. So we didn't get this assessment done in twenty twenty. First year that we did it, if you refer to page three. You can see um that we didn't score very high, but that's to be expected. It's the first year that we implemented it. That's the uh dark blue line. I don't know why they did monochrome colors with some different hatches to distinguish the years, but they did. Um, you can see that twenty twenty-three um is, this is the year that we're looking at most recently. OHSU just got this report back to us. We've made a lot of improvement in the various domains. The staff feels a lot more confident in working with people who are struggling with suicide at all levels. So just giving a shout out to um, to the employees of CCS and the work that they've done. And then wanted to bring it to your attention and see if you have any questions on what the domains are, what the scores mean. Or the work that we're doing or the work that is yet to be done.
I'll just comment, uh, it's great to see that every year, like you say, you're getting more comfortable with the process and doing the program. And scores keep going up, so it's great to see.
Thank you.
Just like to point out, you know, they had a couple of ones in two thousand and nineteen and those are some of their highest scores now. That's quite a, that's quite an accomplishment on training and identifying, that's really cool.
Back in two thousand and nineteen, I, I think I probably shared this with the commissioners here at that time. I was just uh so surprised that our staff didn't feel that they had many tools in their toolbox. For how to work with folks who are struggling with suicide. We're a counseling agency and it's what we do. So it was very eye-opening. We've put a lot of time and resources into increasing their skill set. Bringing in um national trainers, sending people to become train the trainers. And uh others, individuals to get trained. So it is great to see that um, that folks are feeling better about the work that we're doing. All right, housing funds update, there's no attachment for this. You might recall that back in twenty twenty-two, the, the counties via the CMHPs. Received um housing funds to increase the number of. Beds, homes or resources available for people with behavioral health issues. Um, and who reside in moral county, moral county received just a little over a million dollars. I talked with you about um what you'd like to see, if anything, for a process for gathering information from the community. You said you'd really like us to vet that and work that out. So we um have had meetings in moral county, both in Hepner as well as in Boardman. To um gather feedback from the community around their thoughts or concerns, um advertise those. Nobody showed up, so I don't know what to make of that. Um, I'm guessing that folks maybe do have thoughts, but. Anyways, we're going to move forward and now identify some specific homes. That we might be able to purchase for the population that we're serving. Any questions on that? You have a. Okay.
Could you tell me, well, who in uh CCS is kind of heading up the housing or handling it all? Is it one particular person or is it group with you?
Alita Nelson is the point person, so you probably would know her, Commissioner Sykes. She's a South End person that works for CCS, that oversees housing. Jeff, you might have seen her at the moral county fair. She's been the swine superintendent. And she's very active in the community. And then Mark, Matt Bergstrom uh has been working closely with her. And he's our chief operations officer.
So it's those three that are kind of heading up the.
I, I, those three including me.
Yeah.
But Alita would be the point person, yeah.
I just kind of wonder how, what the structure of.
Yeah, there's more people that work in the housing program, but Alita's been the driver.
Now, as far as uh one question on that, uh. What, what's the process when you do identify a site? What do you, when you walk me through that, when you leave from there?
What we identified for moral county was to do the community meetings, gather input. And again, nobody showed, so what we were going to discuss at the community meetings. Um, would be what, what concerns were, what the community thought we should do when we identify a site. Um, if there's certain neighborhoods or areas they would like for us to avoid, answer questions around the population, so on and so forth. So without that, the, the process that we put together was that we'd identify the site, notify um. The people in the immediate area of the site, offer to have a, a meeting for them. Um, to express their concerns, meet either as a group or just individually. So we'll go door to door, basically, um, and connect with them. And unless there's significant opposition, we would move forward with an earnest money agreement to purchase.
Okay, good, thank you.
Yeah, any suggestions to that process?
No, I like it. I like the door to door, I like the contact, I like the pre-threat work. Good way to go.
We've done it both ways and gotten feedback both ways that they don't like it, so I don't try to, you know, figure out. Been doing this for a while in the different counties that we work in and. And uh. Hard to predict what, what folks are going to want.
Yep.
We'll try, we try. Okay, residential program reports, uh, we just put together, asked the administrators of each of the residential programs. Put together a brief document on um the work that they do and the staffs that they employ. I'm not going to talk about each one, but um we have Columbia River Ranch that's here in Boardman. It's been here um since two thousand and. Four, I believe, so twenty years, yeah. Um, a lot of folks don't know that it's here, which is a good thing, probably. And it's a great resource for moral county residents, and then in South moral county, you have Lakeview Heights. Columbia River Ranch is not secure, people can come and go, Lakeview Heights is secure. So doors are locked and people have to leave with, with staff. Um, it's about probably fifty-five jobs um that are created. With those two programs. Any questions on the residential programs? Last is just CCS's newsletter that we do every quarter. Interesting information there, good information on what we're doing. So that's it. It's like, sometimes I can, I'm hearing them talking for a good half an hour, this goes a little bit quicker.
Good stuff going on. You do a lot of good stuff in our county and I can see why other counties want you.
I love what I get to do, thank you.
Yeah, you really, you really do good and we hope your relationship with the county is good, because we like what you do.
Yeah, it is good, appreciate it. Looking forward to meeting with Matthew tomorrow and your new employee. So that's, um, that's great. I always like talking about how the relationship works and the contracts work. So, thank you. Okay, have a good day.
Yeah, you too.
Well, what I would add that we've been doing um a lot of debriefings for first responders. The last week or two or three. So it's, it's a privilege to support our first responders. Um, and, and an honor and something we don't take lightly. And uh, just to acknowledge the hard work and the trauma and soil that, that they go through. Um, for different events, including when they lose a member of their family. Um, and tomorrow we'll be doing a uh support meeting in conjunction with the Gillum County Sheriff's Office. At the community meeting for Lone Rock. Um, obviously a fair amount of that is in Gillum County, but also a lot is in moral county. Um, so supporting those victims that unfortunately no structures were lost. But a lot of rangeland and people's um livelihoods will be.
Good, help out our first responders, they're a big job right now. Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Good, stuff with the C ambulance service area provider update.
Um, thank you, uh Chair, um. Well, I know the Zoom crowd didn't uh hear the public comment. I do want to address um a concern that was brought up and what was quoted. And I have heard some consternation through uh just the community grapevine. Our press release that we released on July third mentioned that um. Moral County's Board of Commission acted on staff recommendations and approved moving forward with notice of awards for ambulance service areas. Under the new ambulance service plan that will be effective on July seventeen. Boardman Fire Rescue District was awarded the Northern ASA, while moral county health district was awarded the Southern and Northeast ASAs. That's where Stuart stopped. Um, what goes on with this paragraph that was published was staff were directed to finalize contract negotiations. To bring final contracts back to the board for final approval. It is anticipated that ASA providers will assume responsibilities for the respective areas in late July or August. Depending on contracts being settled and resources being put into place. So as we, as we're looking at this, just, just to put it out there for the public record, there's a difference between award and contract. Um, yes, we have awarded them, we are in the process of contracting them. As we've looked at it and um, as the um, as my advisory committee that, uh, that I worked with. That it, we did not consider the compensation as part of it. We looked at merit capabilities, all those other things, made that recommendation to you. Um, and uh, over the last two weeks, we've been able to, uh, to work with both entities. Uh, Boardman's was fairly straightforward and today we have their award letter uh ready for uh submittal to you. And hopefully approval, so we can proceed with that. Um, moral county health district, we've had multiple meetings with them. Um, and for clarifications on two items, first of all, compensation, just understanding how we need to get that language nailed down correctly. And everything's taken care of correctly. And the second one is their requirement for the IGA. We've talked with them, we went through some of those uh, some of those details. And um, we have a document that I'd like to, the commission does not need to act on it today. But just want to give us approval to go to the cities. We did hear uh from Aaron from Irigan that they might not be interested in this. I'd like to officially go out and say, here's the document, we have the five-year term here, it's not final language, it is a draft. And get their feedback and if there's, and see if we can't get that taken care of, so we can get moral county health district under contract. If there's pushback on that, we'll be working with moral county health district, the attorneys and representatives from the cities to finalize. And try to figure out if that IGA is the, the path, or if we need just to come back and, and bring something else to the VOC. Um, so our intent, and I relay this to moral county health district, is still to proceed with the award as noticed on July third. Uh, by this body and uh, we're still working towards that way. We do have a staggered release, Boardman's going, um, if, if acceptable by the commission, Boardman, we'd like to get them signed. So they can get started as of tomorrow officially on, for the Northern uh ASA. And um, we're continuing to work with moral county health district. Uh, my anticipation is to reach out all cities uh with the, the approval uh, um, in. I guess in concept of the draft IGA, and our next meeting with moral county health district is next Monday. So that's, that's our plan at this time. Um, with this, uh, with this contract. Uh, the assignment contract uh or agreement, uh, does set up, uh, it's a five-year term. Uh, slightly less than five years, we're uh setting it up, so it expires uh June thirtieth. Uh, does have the um, the annual amount that will uh, will reimburse. Um, paid on a quarterly basis, so they aren't holding that. And the, one of the key things is that um, at the end of the year, because billings go a little bit later, we'll have a true-up where they. Um, where we make sure everything's whole and everything's done. Two, two items of language in there, uh, one is we anticipate providing a CPI uh index. Uh, based increase over the years, so whatever the cost of uh doing business is, we, we adjust that up. And then the other thing is, if there is undue expenses, it gives me about a ten percent leeway to, uh, to increase that amount. Of course, we would, I would always be bringing that up to the, the board of commissions. I, to acknowledge on that, just let you know that we've, we've had some overruns and we'd have to do that. So those, that's kind of the gist of that. This same language is fairly similar to what you'll see in the moral county health district one. We're just working on, on those final details and specifically their requirement for the IGA, which uh, I'd like to just have approval in concept. For us to go and e- explore fully with the cities that we're going to be asking to be involved in that. So with that, I'd ask for a motion to um. A motion to approve the ASA assignment to Boardman Fire Rescue District for the Northern ASA. And authorize uh the board chair and the county administrator to sign the document. And then I'd ask um, a motion to approve in concept the intergovernmental agreement for moral county health district. And authorize uh the county administrator to work with the five cities uh to finalize that IGA document.
So, you have anything, Dave? So I'll make the motion to approve the ASA assignment to Boardman Fire Rescue District for the Northern ASA. And authorize board chair and county administrator to sign the document.
Hold on a second. Move a second for the discussion. All favor.
I.
I, all opposed, motion carried.
So on the IGA, I do have questions. The way that it's worded there. Is the, is whereas, you know, the health district provides all these services. Does it preclude any of the entities from working with anybody else that may want to come in to pay their shingle out and provide similar services? And I guess also what crossed my mind is, you know, we do partner with community counseling solutions. Had a long, successful relationship with them. You know, one of the things in here says, you know. And whereas mental health related services, so with this IGA, cause any. Problems with our relationship with community council and solutions. Um, you know.
Bob Blackmore's my uh initial reading of it, didn't, we did not pick up on that. We did talk, I did have a call from one of the municipalities and they brought up that concern. And so that's, that's one thing that we would like to hammer out, make sure. Um, my approach on this is that it's not an exclusivity uh contract. In fact, that would, that would be kind of the point where uh, Aaron Palmquist's comment of this doesn't, this isn't right. You can't, you can't constrict on that. Uh, and we wouldn't want to go that way. Part of this is to uh, to, to consolidate and solidify. That we're going to be working together as partners. There's been a lot of uh, a, a lot of going back and forth. And strife over the last few years, and this is a bit of an olive branch, saying, let's work together as we make some determinations on this. However, I would be uh, I, I would be very willing as we work through with the municipalities and with the health district. On finalizing this agreement, to make sure to avoid exclusivity. And uh, to make sure that it doesn't preclude or, or hamper any, any successful uh agreements. That we have or could have to make sure that the moral county residents are, are, are doing well.
And have you had any idea of what the health district stance is going to be? If Irigan refuses to sign it, or any other city refuses to sign it?
One of the things that we talked about is um, I mean, I will be the lead person because this is something. One of the things that we talked about is, I mean, I will be the lead person because this is something attached to a contract that, that we are trying to finalize. And they have assured me that they would be willing to come, present, listen to the concerns and work through some of these issues there. You know, this is a starting point document, might not be what the finalized action is.
Before you
Yes, sir.
You said they would be willing to come, come where?
The Health District to meet with the, the, the cities, and I'm assuming either individually or combined.
Yeah, I thought so. I just wanted to make sure. That's a good thing.
Yes, it is. And that's the thing, our three meetings with them since, since our last meeting have been very positive. We've had some very direct conversations on a few items and, but overall, there's a, I think, you know, a, a strong desire to move forward on this. And they've, they've really put, put forward their best foot, I think, on this. They've got some grounds they want to hold on to, understandable, and any kind of negotiation system, this is something that they've asked for. And if we run into too much resistance from the cities, we'll be asking them, what's a better way to get those assurances that you'd like? But I'd like to take this and start having those direct conversations with the cities. And so that's why we just want to bring this with the amended term that we talked about two weeks ago to see if there's any questions from you. We can double check on the exclusivity and make sure that that, that is not something that comes to bear on in signing this agreement.
Anything else, Dave? Well, I think that you're aware of our concerns and so I will. Let's see. Motion to approve the intergovernmental agreement for Morrow County Health District and authorize county administrator to work with the five cities within the county for consideration.
Hold on a second. I'm doing second and a further one, Scott. All favor.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you, Matt. Okay, next up is six D.
Morning.
Hi. How are you doing?
Good. Oh, you guys.
We're good.
There you go.
Why are we just, I just don't think I support for him.
You're both good, great. The whole room.
Consensus forward.
Okay, consensus.
Fine, it's fine. Okay, so we're here today to talk about our request for coverage for the upcoming benefit year. So the benefit year runs from January one calendar year. We do this every year with our insurance broker, which is CIS. And this year, we just wanted to give the board an opportunity to compare and maybe select some additional coverages to offer our employees. So there are a few options that we would recommend considering. And those are, you'll see under number one on the cover sheet is the voluntary employee paid benefits. Those would be at no cost to the county except for the administrative costs. But it would just give the opportunity for the employees to select some additional coverages at a low-cost group rate through our CIS trust. So those are the, we got the identity protection plan through all state, trauma coverage, accident insurance through MetLife, critical illness insurance through MetLife, and hospital indemnity insurance through MetLife. We do currently offer those bottom three. We partner with Aflac for those, so we would, we would basically offer both. But there is an advantage through the CIS as we review the rates and they are a little bit cheaper. So just offering that through our current broker. And then in addition to those voluntary employee paid benefits, our current contract with our life and long-term disability vendor, LifeMap, they have been acquired by another company, it's called US Sable. And so our contract with LifeMap will be terminating on August thirty-first. So as of September first, we'll either have to sign with the new company or vendor, or go through CIS to provide our life and long-term disability. So if you look down below on option number two, we have outlined some of the financials surrounding that. Currently, we pay nine dollars and fifty-one cents per employee per month for our LifeMap coverage. For the same coverage through CIS, we would pay six dollars and fifty-one cents per employee per month, so it would actually go down three dollars for the same coverage through CIS. Or there's another option, we had asked CIS to look into providing a little bit more benefit for the employees. And that would be, so currently we offer twelve thousand for life insurance for employees. Which, as you're probably aware, that's not that much in today's age for funerals or covering a couple months of bills if you were to have a death of a loved one. And so we did look at one point five times your salary coverage for life insurance up to fifty thousand max through CIS. And that cost was twelve dollars and forty-two cents per employee per month. The quote and the package is provided in the board packet. But basically, it would be about three thousand six hundred.
It, it's approximately about forty-two hundred a year increase if we went up to the fifty thousand.
Yeah, for the, for the entire county to provide that five times the benefit for life insurance.
For the full year for some of all county?
Yeah. And so we have worked with finance. Do you want to speak to that at all? Because since it's not budgeted, but it's
Fully in favor of it. I'm concerned about budgetary impacts. Through our vacancy rate, so.
So we are currently, our recommendation to the board is to approve us allowing to offer employee-paid voluntary benefits through CIS for the next calendar year. And then in addition to switching to CIS for our long-term disability and life insurance carrier effective September one. And then if you see under my suggested motions, there's two options for the long-term in life, if you wanted to leave those at the current benefit coverage levels, or if you wanted to increase it to the fifty thousand maximum. Is there anything that you wanted to add to that, Mindy?
No, and we did give you numbers, you know, even for a higher, if you want to go up to seventy-five, but they're just, I mean, it's just a little bit more the, the yearly impact on that would be around ten thousand a year to do, but, but it is all adjustable too. It's not like a flat rate, it is based off your wage. So it's one and a half times your wage up to fifty or up to seventy-five, it's not. So it's a little bit, there's a little bit of variable in there.
You have any questions, any recommendations or feedback?
No, I appreciate the financial impact of sitting here trying to do the math, my head. Kevin?
I, I, just a quick clarify question, and maybe it's obvious, I'm just being dense. The max of fifty thousand is that the max benefit or is that the max salary?
Max benefit, so it's one and a half times your salary up to fifty thousand.
Anything, Dave?
I don't.
So, motion will be to approve offering employee-paid voluntary benefits in the twenty twenty-five plan year.
Hold on a second. I move the second and further discussion, all favor.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed.
And then I'll move to approve switching the current vendor for long-term disability and life insurance from LifeMap to Hartford administered by CIS. The increased benefit coverage levels of one and a half times salary with a max of fifty, fifty thousand dollars.
Hold on a second bit. Move the second hit for the discussion. All favor.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carried.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
I think this will be great for our employees.
Thank you.
It will be a generalization, Matt. I'm in the Health Division Center in Boyster, Department of Energy, Steve Freeman.
So I don't believe Steve's on, he and the sheriff's reports might be, we'll just have to have the written report, so I'll just speak to this. What we have is we have a, an agreement here to get compensated when we run EOC up, regional EOC operations in regards to the Columbia Generating Station and more or less the Hanford site. They do practices of something were to happen there, how we set up VOC and handle those. We've had two such operations and this agreement allows us to be compensated for, for hosting those and taking care of those. We've ran it for several years, this agreement actually, as you'll notice, is in arrears. We've been operating without and as we went to process our invoice, our finance department and their due diligence says, where's our agreement saying we can charge this? And it became apparent that we were not up to date on our contracts. And so this is that contract to allow us to do that, to be able to get re, compensated for hosting that EOC operation and, and help fund our emergency management and other, other items as needed. So we'd ask the board to allow us to, to, to sign that, proceed to get that up, so we can continue with those operations. It's a great field exercise and we get a little compensation.
So just clarification, we've done this in the past and we weren't getting compensation for something that we could have, or?
Well, we, we processed the invoices and we got paid. And when we asked where the agreement was, the state's like, oh, yeah, if you wouldn't mind signing this contract, we'll get that along. So it's us doing, being better at due diligence than other entities.
We've had agreements prior to this one that, that have been signed and executed. We've only done one exercise, I believe, under this agreement, so there hasn't been any transactions of money under this agreement so far, I don't believe.
I was just curious.
But we've had, it's a, I think this was a six-year agreement, I don't remember the duration of the prior agreements, but it's been in place for a number of years.
No, it's, I can always say this is great that the staff and everybody's getting everything in place, so we're following the rules, there's policies and procedures in place, that's, that's great. Want me to sign the agreement?
I got one.
Okay.
Does the contract match what we've been doing? There's no surprises in there.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure. I, I haven't seen the previous ones.
Yeah, it, it, it does. So move to sign the agreement, direct staff to invoice, order department, energy in the amount of ten thousand dollars.
Hold on a second. Move the second and further discussion. All favor.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, motion carried. Thank you, Matt. Okay, next up we have, we're six F, Idaho Power Road Use and Maintenance Agreement, and Eric's going to give that to us.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
So before we get started, I'll declare I'm on the board of Human to Electric. Human to Electric doesn't currently have any agreements with Idaho Power Company, so I, but I will declare a potential conflict, it just is in the future. At some point, maybe we will use the services of Idaho Power in the B two H. With that, we do not have a point to it.
Well, potential, you say, is that's okay.
Okay, thank you. I'm bringing for the board's consideration a road use and maintenance agreement with Idaho Power. Idaho Power. This is covering their proposed three hundred mile long, single-circuit transmission line. They've been working on for years on sites located in Morrow County. The agreement will help maintain the safety of the motor in public and the road integrity during their construction project. As described in the terms and conditions, Idaho Power Company will be responsible for following the approved haul routes and responsible for repairs of any road damage caused by equipment and transport vehicles during construction as described in the road use agreement. This agreement, road use and maintenance agreement is very similar, almost exact to the, the other road use agreements that we've been, have been previously approved for other projects. I do also want to note that if this agreement is approved, they're, they're not going to work, this is just one step in the process, there's other things still going on. But I'm comfortable with, with the way that it's written and what the agreement says. Yeah, you have any questions?
So we we know now where all, where we can supply all the roads that they're going to have and walk down it, correct?
We do.
Is that, is the site, is the route set then?
It's set right now. Yep, there, there were some changes, we've been negotiating this for a long time.
Yeah, I know.
And I believe this is final, I mean, changes do come. And there's, there's items in the agreement to deal with any, any such changes that might occur.
Yeah.
Yeah.
No, it's not that I, if those, I just, it's kind of coming to a end here.
I think so.
Think so. Okay.
I think what I want to make, it's important to mention on this for public aspect. This is just again, make clear the road use agreement, this is not an aspect saying, oh, the county approves this path, the county approves this project. It's just, yeah, I want to make sure anyone who's listening to that.
Yes.
This is purely the idea of saying, we know county roads are going to be adversely affected possibly on this construction. What is the inventory of the road condition now, making sure it gets done to that condition afterwards, making sure there are rules to follow for the county roads? You know, we don't have the ability to say, heck, no, we don't want this, just now figure out how to get the county roads. If it's been approved by the state or other agency, that's just kind of what we are here, I thought it'd be important to mention that.
I, I was just trying to get a sideways look and see if this thing is finally coming. Maybe Eric was going to give us that.
Yeah, there's, yeah, there's still work to be done, planning other things.
All right, I'll, I'll make motion to approve and enter through the presented road use maintenance agreement.
That is
further discussion. All favor.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, motion carried. Make sure.
Thank you.
Again.
Okay, I'll stay put.
Yes, stay right there. Okay, we're on the G, that was solar, that was zero road use maintenance grid.
Yes, again, this is another road use agreement for a development company, but might not be as, as wide, widely known as it is on port property out by the Boardman Airport, however, they will be using a small section of, of county road to access this, so to be consistent, we also want to enter, well, they want to enter into an agreement with us, road use and maintenance agreement. The section of road is on tower from the O dot right away near the truck stop. Just about a half a mile, it's really not much, it's should be minimal impact, however, we, I still, like, like I said, would like to enter an agreement to make sure that the integrity of the road and safety is maintained. This is solar, nine hundred and forty-seven acres of land, again, on, on port property.
So the only comment I have here is that in the prior one, you're charging a hundred dollars an hour when you're out videoing the road and doing any on it. And on this one, it was seventy-five dollars an hour, so I was just wondering why the difference.
Good eye.
For sure.
I mean, if your time's worth a hundred bucks an hour, we need to get a hundred bucks an hour.
Yeah.
I think I negotiated.
It's on the hundred dollar side.
I think, I think that I, I negotiated a hundred after getting through this one and moved to Idaho and felt Idaho Power and felt like we should probably up that and see if they'll agree to it. Moving forward, the hundred stays. So I'm looking through as, making sure that it's consistent on the pre, the pre-construction versus the post-construction inventory.
Yeah, both from the seventy-five.
Okay. I'm okay with that this time.
You are? Well, it sounds like your explanation was just that you'd kind of preliminarily negotiated this agreement before you did the B two H agreement.
Correct.
I believe it's, uh, doing business about it since.
It has. I, I also.
Cost of moving on July first. So it's only a half mile worth of road, so you know, it's like you're spending hours and hours, so.
I believe also I in, asked for increase in, uh, if the county has to come in and make any repairs, uh, where the, the developer can't or doesn't, I increase administrative costs from ten to twenty percent. Cause and they, that was agreed upon, so trying to, you know, increase of what actually that we're, we need to get reimbursed for.
Nothing more, Dave?
Not from A D O.
Move to approve and enter into the presented road use and maintenance agreement with Tower Solar LLC.
Also, move to second, further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, Eric.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
You bet.
And next up is A D presentation, my country really hard is Trail Interpretive Panels, Cameron.
Is, um, Stephen pulling him up or we can do that?
Hoping maybe you can hear.
Okay. See how fast that is. I didn't ask for that ahead of time.
Was this just from the?
Okay.
And then, we know him, we could, for everybody online, could you just introduce yourself?
Landon Jones, more Kenny planning.
Hey, somebody might know.
Yeah, all right. So, uh, quick little update on where we're at with the interpretive panels for the Heritage Trail. Monday, we received, uh, shipment of all the new panels. I got one on display for you guys to see. They're amazing. Um, we're hoping to get things installed over the next few months. Uh, we're working with Boardman, Yergin Parks and the Port of Morro to get proper Army Corps permits to put in any new panel stands. Um, and then we're gonna have to do some work on some of the existing panel stands to refurbish them. I've received the final invoice and project is pretty much closed out. We're excited to get these installed and hopefully do some kind of event, uh, announce all these panels.
So this is what, just a month or so ago, we authorized a delay in deliverables because of the.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Nope. Yeah, just want to make sure. So I thought.
That is, it is, and this feels a little anticlimactic, but it's actually really exciting, um, to have nice new panels along, um, seven different spots on the Heritage Trail. Or is somebody able to pull those up from the?
I don't see any.
They weren't added to the. Okay. Sure, let's see.
Uh, yeah, I don't have eight easels to display them on, but if you guys are interested in looking at all of the new panels, they're over in the planning office, so I can sit through them and show you guys. They look awesome.
Yeah, they really do. And, and it looks like, um, you know, just a piece of graphic art, but to do anything, uh, public displays such as this takes a lot of public involvement and Landon really led the whole project. We got a small, um, micro grant from Amazon Web Services to help pay for part of this, and then we paid for the other part of it. Um, unlike the existing panels that are over twenty years old, um, these, um, we use that existing content and then the consultant, Sea Reach, and Sea Reach specializes in this sort of work. So they do interpretive panels in the Pacific Northwest, including a, a large contract with O dot for updating the Oregon Trail interpretive panels. Um, the current version is in Spanish and English. And, um, the one that Landon is displaying right now is the Yergin Area Interpretive Panel. So Landon and our student intern are going to have some sort of event to unveil them, which helps bring attention to the Heritage Trail, um, which is timely because we're, um, getting ready to approve the final contract with the engineering firm who's helping us with that Heritage Trail plan.
So this one will be located down here in the Marina somewhere. Yes. That'll be in the area in Marina Park.
And just to add another finer point, when Landon says he's working with the Army Corps to get permission, that is a significant undertaking, cause anytime you move any dirt on land owned by Army Corps, a, any dirt, you have to have special approval. So we have two panels, one in the Boardman Park and one.
We got three panels, two in the Boardman Park Boundary and then one in the area park.
There they are. Yay, did you make that happen, Matt?
Yes.
Oh, awesome.
So just to, I guess, show what, which ones they are, if you want to just comment where they're we got.
Yeah, so Historic Boardman, this is gonna be, uh, put in an existing panel location outside the Boardman Library, right along the sidewalk on the street. A lot of the content's pretty similar, some cool old images on there.
That's the old, um, town site too. Isn't that what is in Boardman? Yeah.
This is one of the new panels going at the Boardman Park. So one of the new panel locations is gonna be in there. This was an existing panel, so we just updated a lot of the language and image on there.
And consulted with, uh, the consultant, worked with the Confederated Tribes to make sure the content is correct.
Shoreline Birds is gonna be down on Sailboard Beach, so right off of Marine Drive, along the Heritage Trail walking path, right along the river. They pulled the old panel stand out, but it's gonna be put back in right next to a bench on the spot. So good spot to sit and then read the panel, enjoy the view. Port of Morro, uh, this is gonna be, it was on Marine Drive, but they've since built that road out and then put in sidewalks, so trying to work with them to see if they want to put it in a new location, maybe on that marker forty park, um, along where the trail continues. Um, they were super great getting images and language.
If anybody needs photos, Erica Lassiter at the bar has an amazing collection of photos for all kinds of reasons.
This is out on the Wildlife Refuge, so kind of right in the middle between Patterson Ferry and the Port of Morro.
We had to switch around the birds because, uh, the older panels had range birds and shoreline birds on the same panel. So now they're, they're different types.
Nope, can't mix them.
Yeah, right.
It's an irrigates, the one we have right there.
Hispanic Latino Heritage, this is a new panel to the selection. It's gonna be displayed in the irrigate park. So this is where the new panel stand is gonna be, uh, right along the waterfront. And Fire and Water is the last one. It's located east of the Marina Park out here, irrigate, maybe a quarter mile, couple hundred yards. There's an existing panel location, so this is just a big update for that one.
Kind of east of the Ballfields area.
Yep.
Right by the Fish and Wildlife area.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's always fun to bring a fun, positive project to.
I have always liked this in the beginning and I've read every one of them a couple times.
Okay.
And I, and one reason why is when I go somewhere else, I always like to see these and I think sometimes communities don't always spend the money and, and they have like, I'm glad to see you guys did this. Um, one thing is, and I think I asked you before, is, uh, if you were gonna have these online and then make it, uh, so chambers of commerce could do that, I think that would be, you know, something you might think about, you know? Or anybody that wanted to, uh, a chamber, like, you know, because they're very informative.
Yeah. Definitely talk about adding some kind of link to those.
It's a good idea. Um, we haven't done a, a communication or outreach, but we'll do that. And I think this final version is on the website.
It is.
So once we post it on the website, anybody can duplicate it, but we'll, um, make sure that other people know it's out there.
Great visuals and, um, I just like this.
So something about the trail, yesterday I was giving Vincent a tour of the port. We drove out what used to be the old highway.
Yeah.
And where the gates are, where the old highway stops. Somebody's literally driven through one of the gates.
Oh.
So I don't know. I assume you guys would know who to contact unless I know of it.
Yeah, the refuge manager out there. All, all, they might already know, but we can let them know. That'd also be a good excuse to get them to come to our Trail Plan Update Meeting. Great, thank you.
Great job, William.
Thank you.
It's all right, we'll move into Department Reports. Start with, yeah, report, report, where you work, London.
Morning.
Thank you.
Um, I've submitted my report to you guys. Um, I did notice here when I was looking here on challenges that are newed by environment and everything else. Um, I don't know what happened, but that's an incorrect figure that since the last report, the highest was a hundred and eighteen miles an hour, not a hundred and fifty, that was the one before. Um, we are seeing our speeds slowly coming down again, but unfortunately, I mean, I just signed a suspension today for doing over a hundred. The good news is, um, if, on the number of people that were assisting getting their driver's license and becoming legal drivers in a, involved in our community. Um, when I did this report, we were at twenty-four already for this year as opposed to last year's twenty-three. So we're already ahead and today I just did it now at three. Three more people came in with a valid driver's license, insurance and everything else. So the program seems to be working. We're putting more licensed, educated drivers that are able to have their insurance, therefore not further victimizing other people should they be involved in an accident. So I think it's a win-win for our citizens. Otherwise, I'm here to answer any questions, Ian, or?
Just, like I think I've said before, I like the, I like the, the way that you handle help along with punishment, you know, if you want to call it, you know.
Yeah. I think that's the just way of, of taking care of.
Yeah, I don't know. Most places do that, but I'm glad we do, because I think it's very good to do that.
I think it's a complete win-win. It's, it's overall, I mean, we're saving money just in law enforcement time and court time and everything else, not to mention benefits.
Yes. So, okay, well, thanks, Len.
Thank you.
All right. Next up, Juvenile Department, for the report, Christie.
Morning Commissioners, good morning, everybody. Uh, for the record, Christie Kinney, uh, with the Juvenile Department. Um, I did provide you with the written copy, um, of the report, but I'll just kind of touch on a little bit. Um, it was the previous board that signed. We were participating in a study called LEAP, uh, Leveraging Evidence to Activate Parents. Um, so both myself, uh, probation counselor Samantha Ramirez, uh, went through multiple trainings. We, uh, were participating in this study to hopefully get some desired outcomes of trying to increase parents' involvements with their kids. Um, unfortunately, a lot of what we're seeing is sometimes the parents don't either have the skills or maybe they just don't have the patience to deal with some of their kids' behaviors. So, uh, we had some instructions on packets, documents, things that we actually meet with parents on to try to increase their willingness to participate in their kids', whether it's schooling, counseling. Um, and so we would do checklists, uh, with the Oregon Social Learning Center. We would do, uh, thirty to sixty minute online face-to-face training monthly with Oregon Social Learning Center. Um, so it's a great program to hopefully get these parents more involved. Um, that study has just now concluded at the end of this, uh, I think it was actually end of June. They finalized, so now they're working on collecting all the data for all of the counties that were involved. So the study involved, uh, not just Oregon, but some Idaho counties, so juvenile departments, uh, throughout Oregon and, and rural, some Oregon, uh, counties. So excited to see probably in about a year what that study looks like, but hopefully that it will, uh, produce some good, um, evidence-based practices that this is something that's working in both the juvenile justice system, as this was a predominantly, um, known in the healthcare system. They were seeing that a lot of, uh, what they were trying to utilize in the healthcare system had some desired outcomes. So it's an interesting study, but we're still gonna be utilizing that as part of our tools and our toolbox when we work with these kids and families, uh, moving forward. Um, just an update that Samantha had intended, excuse me, it's called O Sotan, the Oregon Adolescent Sexual Opening Treatment Network. Um, and Eugene, she thought it was a very great, uh, training. It's a two-day training, um, specifically on sexually acting out behaviors and best practices on bringing those back to the youth that we serve here, uh, in Morrel County. Uh, we do have an upcoming training, if y'all are interested. Um, the Juvenile Departments Association, uh, puts on a conference. It's in Seaside this year. Um, it'll be September, I believe it's sixteenth through the eighteenth. So if y'all are interested and want to learn more about juvenile justice and overall kind of the, the evidence-based practices we're, we're implementing as well as some risk assessments, motivational interviewing, let me know. I'd be happy to forward you on the, uh, conference agenda, if you're wanting to, uh, partake in that. I, uh, always like to try to send it out to all our other community partners, so schools, uh, Department of Human Services, CCS, in case they have any folks that might want to, uh, jump on board and, and be part of that as well. So that'll be in September. Um, and then another update, which is our reporting system that we have, um, it's called, we've known it as B I S. It's our Business Intelligence System Reporting System. It's how we run reports for getting recidivism numbers. Um, you can customize it to every condition. So just the other day I was giving Mindy our hours of how many, uh, youth did community service. And so you're able to customize these reports to track anything you want in our system. So it's a very handy report. It's very, um, different. And so there's been a lot of training, training that George and I have been doing virtually in learning all the ins and outs and all new platforms. So, um, yeah, that's new. Um, and then I just always give you guys kind of an idea of some numbers of what kind of referrals we've received in this last quarter. Um, otherwise, any other questions, comments?
I guess, is it, uh, just maybe not reflected in the stats or so? Is there any, uh, changes going on in the, in the youth of Morrel County? You know, spikes that you're seeing or concerns you're having to keep an eye on things? Is something happening that you, that you haven't seen before and it's going on like that?
I wouldn't necessarily say spikes. I just know towards the end of the school year, uh, we did see an influx in the misdemeanors between assaults and disorderly conducts that occurred right kind of towards the end of, uh, end of May, uh, to June. But otherwise, it's, it's still kind of fairly consistent what we've seen across the board. I might have reported, I don't know if you recall, it's probably been about a year or so ago, we did have an influx of, uh, sex cases. So that was kind of unusual. Um, good, that's not happened so far, so it's, it's still staying fairly consistent with, uh, I would say our trends.
Yeah, that's all I question.
No, nothing, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you very much, Chrissy.
All right.
Appreciate that.
All right, thank you very much. Have a great day.
Yeah, you too.
I'll see. Moving right along.
Morning, for the record, Cameron Mappett, Planning Director. Matt, would you mind giving Stephen screen share?
Yeah.
There he is. Can you hear us, Stephen? Uh, before I start, I wanted to show a map that Stephen made, you know, starting July one, he's full-time G I S. And he stayed late last night. I reached out to Steve Freeland, who's our emergency manager, to check on things for how things were going. Did he need anything? He asked Stephen to put together a map and it's really impressive, pretty scary too, when you show what that looks like.
So Stephen should be able to share his screen and unmute himself.
Are you there, Stephen? There he is. There he comes. Takes a second. There it is. Do you want to just, uh, show a couple highlights, Stephen?
Sorry, Matt needs to unmute. He, he can't do it himself. He, okay.
It looked like it was, huh?
There, can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Yes. Awesome, all right, let me share this for you. Sorry, it wouldn't let me unmute myself. Um, so last night, Steve Freeland, our emergency manager, um, asked me to put a map together for him showing, um, essentially structures east of Hardman and, uh, uh, south of two oh seven. Um, so I put together this, uh, pretty quick interactive map for him to use, um, using some, um, structure footprint data. It's not a hundred percent, but, um, it, it does a pretty good job illustrating where structures are, uh, in the county. And, uh, the, there's four, I added four inset maps here for quick navigation, um, to Anson Wright Park. You've got, there's a Hardman one and. You've got, there's a Hardman one and each one is individually controllable. So you can look at multiple, multiple data points at one time. The points that you're seeing here on the left, the orange and red, that's data from, there's a NOAA satellite that orbits the, the, our, the planet and it looks for, it's called the Visible Infrared Imaging Radio Meter Suite. Basically, it looks for radiative heat on the planet and at a certain level, it kind of associates it with a fire. It's a seven-day history, so it's not showing the fire in its entirety right now. It's just showing the seven, past seven days of work. It's detected this, this fire activity. The shape file, the layer itself is an official layer from ESRI and from NOAA and it updates on an hourly basis. So it gets a pretty good, a pretty good representation of where, where there's some fire activity right now. You know, the map's not perfect, but took me about, about, about an hour to complete and put together for him. And hopefully, hopefully it shows him some good information, helps keep people safe in Moro County.
Pretty cool, huh?
Very impressive, Steven.
I think so. Thank you, Steven. So any questions for Steven about that? Okay.
And it's, it's available. If anybody wants the link, I can forward it on. I'll forward it on to the Commissioners, all three Commissioners and Matt.
Oh, that's excellent. Thank you, Steven.
Of course.
Okay, so.
Just a comment about, I think that this is great to, you know, I've often thought this about, we have this great resource of Steven and the capabilities. The ability for other departments throughout the county to be able to use his abilities. So this is great. We're utilizing Steven.
Yeah, we think so too. Yeah, thank you. Yeah.
As of July first, he transitioned to full-time GIS. And so we are, I mean, it's interesting, they were working with John Doherty at City of Hepner last week on, on several maps. And it really is a resource. In fact, one of the things, we just had a consultant come in looking at Public Works. And we'd like to talk to him about tying in some of our right-of-ways and everything on a GIS schedule. So we can just pull up and be able to see within fairly consideration. So not just, not just our partners, but there's going to be leaps and bounds for the county as well.
And he's also, I could just chip into, he's, 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 he's done some work for the CREWS too, our boundary extension. He did a, did a good job. We've done the maps and everything. So we appreciate that too over at CREWS.
Thank you. Appreciate the confidence.
Very good. So you have the written report. I'll just touch on some highlights and then happy to answer any questions. You heard from Eric today. We've been, we're, we're constantly working back and forth with the development team and the contractor team. Even when a project's under construction for any of the renewable energy projects. On the first page, under energy projects, we included a paragraph this month about temporary RVs. You may have been on the planning commission when that was added to the county code. So the legislature passed a law that said a county may permit the temporary RV parking on land that's owned farm ground for temporary construction workers for renewable energy projects. I don't know of any other county who has done this yet. I was thinking it was simply a matter of adding properties to the list when the county issues the CUP after the Energy Facility Sighting Council issues their site certificate. Because the statute says that the county shall then issue the local CUP. It's a little bit more complicated than that, unfortunately. Next Year has been really great about their project and they're coming back to do an amendment to add additional properties and then we have some findings and some things to do. The good news is that there's a permit path forward. Some of those landowners who may have allowed people to park next to their shops or houses or whatever previously, they do need to come in and get a permit. It's not because we want their fifty dollars. It's because we want to know where they're located. We want to attach them to an address. We want to make sure the sheriff's office and emergency responders know where they are. We want to put some conditions that says please don't have outside open fires, particularly this time of year. We want to know what they're doing with sewer and water. Those are the main things we're going to catch. So we have one on the planning commission agenda for later this month. And then the project that's under construction right now, the Next Door Wind Project, they've been really great about letting their landowners and adjoining property owners know that it, it is an opportunity. It's also an opportunity to generate some extra income, even if you don't have a lease agreement with one of the energy developers. Moving on, the Heritage Trail, you heard from Landon just a minute ago. And we're excited about that and our student intern in Landon are looking at different some sort of a community event, maybe partnering with Boardman with their fall festival to, to bring a copy of our signs or maybe have a ribbon cutting. We're looking at some events, again, to bring attention to this because the Heritage Trail is such a lovely asset for the north part of the county. And then with Vince's involvement, we selected a consultant to update our Heritage Trail concept plan, which is twenty, twenty-two years old now. Vince was involved in that, which is a huge asset for, for our department because Vince has done. He has a really strong background in, in recreation and activities. So it was just super valuable to have him on the selection team. We also asked somebody from the Boardman Park District and Irrigent Park District to be on that selection committee. And we selected J U B Engineering. I have a contract ready for your signature, Matt. I think it's all ready to go. So we will start that and have our first kickoff meeting in August. I'm looking for people who are interested in the trail. We'll have two major open houses, one winter, January, February, and then one in the spring. That will have alternatives and some landscape design and standards. And that's the piece we really, really can't do in-house, is that sort of thing. So anybody interested in the Heritage Trail, whether like you go out there walking or maybe an equestrian person. We're interested in hearing from you. I have a couple of pages about various water activities and rather than restate all of those as an attachment to my report, I included the graphic that we used a couple of weeks ago when Matt and I and county council met with the board to talk about Commissioner Sykes's idea for a consortium and to talk about, you know, we're doing all these studies. Who's going to build? How are those projects going to be funded? So that graphic, I don't have a copy of it here, but that was also in your packet. At least I uploaded it. I hope it got in there. I didn't double-check. Is it there? Okay, good. And I was really hoping that the EPA grant project would produce a graphic like that, but we just, we've needed one for well over a year because we have so many people asking who's doing what, what part of it. Robin gets asked that same question. Sometimes, you know, we, our offices get asked questions. Robin does the public health part and we're doing the planning and sort of pre-infrastructure work out of the planning office. Tomorrow, the EPA grant steering committee is meeting here. We're meeting once a month through November at least. And that's the steering committee that will hear from Ronan from GSI and his team. And, and give us feedback. I think we have a really good, well-diverse, well-rounded group for that. Caitlin Kennedy, our new compliance planner, is just started her fourth week. Actually went out in the car with her for a little bit. We looked at some properties. She's just catching on super fast. Love that she knows the roads better than I do. She came from dispatch, so. And a lot of the property owners she might know for different reasons. So it's really.
That helps.
It really does. Yeah. So thank you, Sheriff Sykes and Dispatch for sharing Caitlin. So, so far she says she likes it. So hopefully that's the case. In terms of natural hazards, I'm super happy to say that after a extended two-year period, our Oregon Emergency Management has approved our natural hazard mitigation plan update. I wish there were agencies who funded comprehensive plan updates. But this is one that by law, by federal law, has to be updated every five years in order to qualify for mitigation funds or disaster relief funds. So we're very timely on, on those updates. And it's now in the Office of FEMA, Region Ten. So that sometimes takes a little while. But at least we're pausing until we hear back from them. And importantly, that includes a list of mitigation projects. So once that's approved, any of the entities, the five cities or the county special districts who participated, if they would like to apply for federal funds for a mitigation project. If it's in that plan, you have a much higher chance of it getting approved. And then we are looking to do the same thing with the Community Wildfire Protection Plan. So my report's always in the month of and the report's always looking at the preceding month. So I just wanted to say thank you for the board who two of the commissioners were able to attend the Eastern Oregon Economic Summit. A lot of work, but a lot of fun. It's really a, a great way for people to see what's happening in our county. Next year, the summit will be in Ontario. I don't know how those logistics will work, but the more state legislators, we had, I think, nine state senators. And I don't know how many state reps. We have people from other agencies and private sector. The more they see how we're doing business. I think we do a pretty good job out here. The more familiar they are, the, the, the less likely they are to impose more onerous restrictions on how maybe local government out here does business. And let's see, I, with a little bit of Steve Freeland's work, although he's super busy. Have been looking into Oregon Department of Energy County Resiliency, Resiliency Grant Program. I'll share more about that. And I owe Matt a memo about that as well. It's a fifty thousand dollar grant to look at energy resiliency on a county level. So again, it's another program with both emergency management and planning. And then two transportation planning projects. Daisy is getting ready to submit a transportation growth management grant application. You approved that letter this morning. And then I'm waiting for memorandum of agreement with ODOT to start work on the Tower Road Interchange Area Management Plan. Tower Road is busy. We were just out there yesterday when we were driving around the Boardman area. It gets even busier during harvest. ODOT has an interest in preserving the capacity of that overpass and that whole interchange. So we'll be looking at that and we'll have a, probably a fairly large advisory group. So county, city, port, lots of those landowners in that area to be involved. And, you know, what should we be doing now in addition to Eric requiring a road use agreement and spacing standards that are in our transportation plan? What other things could and should be done out there?
So on that, I
Yes.
Beat this dead horse that I always beat. There's one landowner out there that's creating all of the traffic out there. How do we get to the point where
Oh.
we get?
Not loves and a different one.
Yeah. I mean, that's really where all the traffic is.
The big volume, for sure.
The number of trucks that go out there and your comment to harvest, it's one landowner, I mean. So how do we get to the point to, you know, and maybe it's too late, maybe we can't, but Finley Buttes has to pay a road impact fee. How do we get the person that's creating all of the impact to that road? That participated in the maintenance of that road? I mean, the county took over that road for their benefit. Before it was a private road, most, the majority of it was owned and maintained by Portland General Electric.
Yeah, when it was mostly open space except for Taggeras Farms, right, which was much smaller.
And they, their product, well, before then, their predominant access was Three Mile Canyon Road.
Ah, uh-huh, right, not Tower. That's right.
And, you know, it was the advent of the dairies out there that increased the traffic out there and started to use Tower Road. And I know you knew that because you were the planning director at the time, the road became transferred from PGE ownership to county ownership.
Did PGE build the entire original road, Tower Road, for the, for the coal plant back in the seventies?
I, I'm going to say from definitely south of Coonsy Road because there wasn't anything else out there. You know, the county road probably stopped pretty close to where Coonsy Road came, come into. And actually, at one point, Coonsy Road didn't come directly west. It would go up and it turned north. And came out there real close to where Loves is.
So I think it's a good question. I've heard you say it before. I'm not sure how to address. I have a couple of ideas, but they're definitely invited to be at the table. In terms of, you know, how, so you both know because of your tenure on the planning commission, there's impacts that can be mitigated by a proposed development. But when, when there's a permit required, there's nothing about farming directly. That would require a traffic study, which would then in turn, if the traffic study showed a direct proportionality would require that developer to pay some proportionate share.
We'd had a preliminary conversation about this about two and a half months ago. And I have to say, I got pushed back to the back burner on a few different items, but let's pull that back up. We did talk about some options. I just kind of spitballing them. Let us kind of redouble our efforts there. That's okay. It may not ever amount to anything. No, I mean, it, I mean, there's one thing about agricultural and we want to foster that. And there's another thing about a incredibly huge and impressive commercial entity there with that kind of, I mean. At the scale they're doing, it's industry. It's not. Oh, yeah. It's not mom and pop homesteading on a hundred and sixty acres. It's, it's an industrial endeavor out there. So, yeah. We'll pull that in again.
Sounds like Matt's on the lead on that. I always like that. So, well, thanks. And then the next item I just wanted to touch on are the field trips. And for different reasons, Landon and I went out on a field trip to Beef Northwest. So I grew up on one of those mom, pop farms. That is a whole different scale of things. So the manager out there asked me to talk a little bit about what the county's doing in terms of water quality and they had to translate around there. Robin and Ana Peñaro have done the same thing. It's just a service they provide to their employees. I heard some constructive feedback. Gives insight into a number of other projects that Matt and I are working on. And then we also visited the Three Mile Canyon Dairy Farms where there is a new dairy facility being proposed. And that's also very impressive when you see, I think, a hundred and twenty head move around a carousel. It's all automated. It's just super impressive.
And I'm guessing your mom, dad there didn't milk a hundred and twenty heads.
We did. We were big. When we got to two hundred, we had really, we were big. Yes, we started at a hundred and before I graduated high school, we were at two hundred and that was big. So not profitable, but big. Yeah, that's right. So the last piece I wanted to mention, and I think Matt mentioned this in his administrative report was the special recognition we got. I submitted the application on behalf of the, the REV program in Uvalke who helped do all the outreach for our Rural Transit Equity Plan. And I know that Patrick and Ben have used it. It was a plan that really was to engage communities, members of the communities who traditionally are not involved in things, may or may not speak English. And ask them what kind of needs and issues they have with transit. And I know that Ben and Pat used quite a bit of that information when they designed, designed their fixed route. And we'll be using some of that survey work also for our Heritage Trail plan because we made sure to have some questions in that survey. And in, in a planning world, in a rural area like this, when you get two hundred respondents to a survey, that's, that's really successful. So we were able, you actually had a sample size that had a significant amount of data to analyze. So the Land Conservation and Development Commission, through their citizen involvement advisory committee awarded that, which also went to Moro County, but it was for the REV program and Uvalke. That's all I have.
Two items I'd like to bring up in relation to the planning and things that we're talking about. Water, some of the water effort.
Water, the, some of the water efforts. One thing to let you know, we've received preliminary notice that we may have the Business Oregon Technical Study Grants by the end of the month. I don't want to count my chickens before they hatch, but we've received good word on that. That, that impacts what we, what we're doing with West Glen. My goal was originally to have a meeting by the end of July. We're still talking with a couple of the partners, the state and, and that. We're not going to have it by the end of July, but we're still efforting and trying to get a date for that. The question is, is, one of the questions is whether it's more productive to just have a big town hall while everybody comes or go out and kind of have some more cottage meetings where we get neighbors in an initial area kind of break it up into smaller, smaller groups as we, as we effort that, that interaction. So just let the commission know it's slipping a little bit, but it hasn't slipped off the radar, so.
You said two, was that one? Oh, the community engagement and the other was the grant. Yes.
So that's what we're having. The next two chair, Steve's down at the EOC, building issues and the sheriff's spread pretty thin with notifications and that. I defer to the written report that the sheriffs have submitted. We didn't have a written report for the emergency management. Once we get through the fire, we'd, we'd definitely like to have them kind of give us an update on how it went and lessons learned kind of things. But as of right now, we just ask you to refer to the sheriff's written report on the next items.
About Sue. Sue, are you online for a report? Are you on Zoom?
I can.
Hi.
Hi.
So for my report today, let me turn off the air conditioner here. Some of the things that I'd like to report is all the judges are booked and ready for fair. I'm currently working on contracts. We do have, like Matt, let you know, we have fire crews in and they're now in all of the dance hall at the fair. They filled that. They're using the annex. All of the outdoor bathrooms, indoor bathrooms and the grass areas. We are trying to keep them off of the football field at the current moment. And including all of their trucks, which at the last count was supposed to be anywhere from sixty to eighty tankers and trucks. So I'm kind of dealing with that. They just come in for a brief moment and then of course they're all gone and then they come back at night. So working on janitorial services and I have a current contract from Gillum, Gillum County and what they did. And so my plan is, is to mimic that contract as far as price and wording. So that's where we are on that right now. For to come, yeah.
Just a quick thing on that. There, there is a use agreement that the, the fire marshal will use for it. They provide some compensation for the fire departments. I'm sure the county would be happy to do it otherwise, but they do have funds to help for that. So that was, we're going to mimic what they were using at Gilliam since we didn't have anything set up specifically on our, our fee schedule. And so just to make sure on that, so.
Yes. And I think the last time I sat in, we were talking about the doors of the sheep barn. So that was successful. They are in, they are working beautifully. They look nice. And our building is locked. So all of our equipment is safe and has help with any kind of kids or people coming in stealing stuff. So that's great. They also got in the motor for the very large door in the Wilkinson Arena. And that is going to really help on muscles from people because that's a very heavy door to move. So that was a success and we're loving it so far. So we have tried to get the large arena wall in the arena is in disrepair and damage. We did try to put out a contract to get that repaired before fair, but the timing was not good. So we will try, we'll patch it again. Have plans for that and try it again after fair. Fair entry is up and running. Hopefully we got all of the issues fixed from last year. Pretty much what I did was deleted the cage fees. We finally figured out how to do that. And hopefully that will fix the problem. So but it is up and running. The last time I looked, we have about fifty entries. We are also having on the twenty fifth and the fifth help sessions to help people, especially older people who aren't used to the online and would just like extra help. I'm also working with the Sage Center to give an area for drop off. If people want to enter things into the fair, they, and they're from the north end, but don't don't want to travel back and forth. We are, have a drop off there. That will start hopefully by the end of July. And then a superintendent from the north end will bring it to the south end and enter it. So hopefully all that works. And the last time I talked with the Loop, they were working on transportation with the Loop back and forth from fair during that week. So I'm looking forward to that. Premium books are obviously out. They should be out and around. We had some superintendents takes some up there. We have new contests, new awards and money. And we're kind of excited about that. I have an art coalition grant and have two artists confirmed for fair that will be presenting and supplying free art lessons and kits through that grant to help encourage about Morro County. And one is a weaving. They'll be weaving, doing a weaving job. And the other is a leather. They're coming out of Goldendale. And she'll be having classes using wellness, so, or using leather. Let's see. So one of them is Jamie Mullins and the other one is from, it's called Bend the Leather or Bend the Trend Leather from Goldendale. So another improvement we are doing, we have a wellness room sponsored. So our old dorm, dormitory room is going to be turned into a wellness room. And it will be multipurpose. We had the Morro County Health District and Pioneer Memorial Therapy both sponsored that. So we will have tables for first aid in there. They will bring full first aid, which was a struggle last year. We really didn't have any nurses or anyone at the fair for the biggest things, scrapes. Somebody gets knocked down by livestock. Bee stings is always a big thing. And of course, heat. The, we did have cooling stations last year thanks to the health health district. And then we're going to incorporate all of that in there. So we'll have a little hospitality. If anybody comes in with a disability, we'll actually have trained people in there for first aid and stuff like that. So I'm kind of excited about that. And then community counseling has also donated some supplies just to have a corner if you have kids that get overwhelmed or being stressed or even people. So we have a station and they've supported with beanbags kind of hand manipulative devices and, and headphones and things like that. So we're really looking forward to that. Let's see, we have a deadline for Fortune H was on the tenth and that went well. We did have a concern this year. We've met with the state vet and the health district or health department, sorry. Robin has helped us quite a bit. We have the avian flu. We've had three positive cases. So we have some sanitation guidelines that we have to follow now through the state. To give a brief rundown on it, we must separate confined air areas yet highly circulate area amongst those areas. So what that means is we had to go buy a giant curtain to separate a different area so we could keep our hog separate from our beef and our dairy, yet circulate the air amongst those areas, if that makes sense. So we've ordered another fifteen foot by eighty foot curtain should be here by the end of July. We'll hang that and that will separate for the most part our swine, dairy and beef. We have some very large fans coming in. We're opening all of the doors to make it flow better. So that's the largest thing. We're also increasing hand washing stations, sanitation stations, signage. And we do have a confined area in case we do have an animal come in with a symptom of it. We have an isolation area and like a hazmat suit. If the animal comes in, they have to be isolated for the entire time. Pretty much that area is where we store all of our pens. But during fair, it's open. So that's where those pens will be set up. The extension agent, Mackenzie, is in charge of that and I'm just helping supply the materials, I guess, for that. We have a diagram about where animals are to walk and how people are to come in and out. And then, like I said, just more hand washing stations and signage that just says, keep your hands off. We have also no lactating animals. That's where the flu seems to be hitting the most with lactating animals. We won't have lactating dairy cows. And then the avian flu is actually hits more waterfowl. So we have just asked, we're not accepting waterfowl this year. We do accept you know, chickens, but just no waterfowl. So that should take us through. So that's a quick rundown on that. If something does come in, it's really just flu type symptoms. It's not life threatening, but I think on the heels of COVID, they're just being extra cautious. But it is costing us. That curtain is almost three thousand dollars to, to buy. So that's coming out of our funds. On the bright side, entertainment is booked. We have contracts going out. All the details are going in. We have two great entertainers coming in, some local entertainers. The Lindsays are opening for them. We have a hypnotist coming in. We have stuff for little kids called Little Rascals. Hopefully a bouncy house and carnival type things of butterfly attraction and lots of other stuff. So and so that, for the most part, that's what we have. We'll let you know more about the fires as they come in. But right now, you know, that's where we are. I'm busy with contracts and logistics, I guess. So any questions?
Not for me. It sounds like you're getting ready, gearing up for a pretty good fair this year.
Yeah, I'm hoping to have things better than it was last year. But I've just got to get through all these firefighters and all of that as well. So.
Right, yeah.
Yep.
Well, any questions? Okay. Well, thank you so much for the report. We really appreciate it.
Sure.
Okay. Keep up a good work for us.
Thank you.
All right. Thanks, Sue. Next, we got treasure and accounts payable. I assume those are just the written ones?
Just written reports at this time.
Okay. That, I'm gonna call. Five minute recess before we move on to fresh bodies. Pull the meeting back to order. Next up with correspondence, do we have any? Missionaries reports. Jeff, you wanna go first?
Sure. So last Friday was a pre meeting and I guess one of the more interesting things going on in Korea right now is Mike McCarthy has been the executive director of that for quite some time. Is looking to retire. So Korea is looking to we gave permission to move forward the process to solicit applicants to apply for the position. The hope is to have somebody in place by the, I guess I'd call it their annual meeting, the Chickers at AOC in November. And do the official handoff there from Mike to whoever's hired to replace him. He said that, you know, he'd be willing to help out on some stuff, you know, in the transition phase, but he wants to go away from doing it full time. Then yesterday, there was a solid waste advisory committee meeting. And for the most part, it was just a tour of Finley Buttes, that we met out at the landfill when did a tour out there, got to see, work on their new cells they're doing. Got to witness their tire shredder in action. So the old tire shredder, they ran into all kinds of problems with parts and availability of parts. So they got a mobile unit in there that they're renting and their permanent one is supposed to be, well, the shredder itself is there, but they're waiting for some conveyors and stuff to and they expect to be able to process more tires and do a faster, better job. I guess, you know, often the question is, so what's the expected life expectancy of the landfill out there? The comment yesterday was over two hundred years.
Really?
They have a long ways that they can move to the west and then once they get those cells kind of developed out, then they move to the north and develop and then to go up and I'd always thought that I remembered that the finished height will be thirteen hundred. It's actually thirteen hundred and ten feet. Because they have a poster in there in their conference room that shows the projected finished elevation of what the landfill would look like. Full capacity. So where's that? On the elevation lines? I don't think he said. I, I asked, because there's one spot that's kind of a little bit higher out there right now. And I says, so is that, he goes, no, we can go up some more over that. But just because of, you know, the slopes and everything, that they have to get more built around it in order to be able to go up higher.
It's interesting.
And then yesterday afternoon was a Loop Advisory Committee. It's here in this room.
Well, similar, they're still generating power.
So they are now, but they are, the company that's doing that's looking to change from generating power and go to, they will have a bunch of scrubbers and filters of the methane gas that comes off the landfill. And then they're looking to put it into the pipeline and it will be renewable natural gas. And that's how they will market it. You know, so I did ask the questions. Are they going to size that facility big enough for the whole expected life expectancy of the landfill? And yes, so they won't have to go on and entering, you know, redo that facility. It will be sized to handle. Is obviously as they add more garbage, you generate more methane.
Yeah, they say it. Keeps, keeps going. As they lay these front pipes down, that's how they go.
Yeah, the, of course, obviously the whole landfill is, you know, the dirt aspects of it, they have different layers of dirt and there's bentite and then there's actually a part where a liner at the bottom of it. So no water seeps through it and methane is all trapped there. Thanks. Else? No, I guess the other aspect of those, you heard me mention that. No, I guess the other aspect of it is you heard me mention that. So Vincent went out there and I saw him out there and so I got back here, dropped off the car and asked him if he anybody that or given them a tour through the port and if he had time and he said he had time, so we went down there and it was spend a little hour to hour and a half driving through and showing them what everything is and explaining things and got to look and, oh, we gotta get back. So there's a little bit left to push on, but yeah, hope you enjoyed it. That's it.
Well, I guess I would, I I also got a invite to go to Beef Northwest, so I'm going out there sometime in August. I'm still here and uh
I've got the same invite, I think.
You did, you you have sent it to me right now. And then uh I got an email from uh Nextera. They're getting ready to do their the solar and the rest of their wind. So Ryan wants to meet with me and Mike, sort of talking about their, they're not quite sure where they're going to go with the pilot or SIP. So his his emails are SIP slash pilot. So on the solar anyway. So we're kind of using the echo solar pilot is is the template, I guess. So we'll be starting to talk to him soon. And he mentioned, uh, you've been talking to him about them.
Yeah.
He was uh said something about he hadn't gotten a exact number. Did you get, have you gotten that to him yet or?
Uh, no, uh, I haven't been asked about that from him yet as far as exact number. The hours and workload, yes, um but not a not a number. Yeah, yeah, I guess I haven't been asked.
I might talk to you later about it. Okay, okay. And I got, so that's coming up. Um I guess that's about a lot now. Okay. With that, we will we're going to go into executive session here pretty quick. Get everybody on the public. And the first one will be, I'll just tell, read that. The first uh first meeting will be ORS one nine two to six six zero two E, which allows the commission to meet in executive session to conduct deliberations with persons designated by the governing body to negotiate negotiate real property transactions. Representatives of the news media and designated staff shall be allowed to attend the executive session. All other members of the audience are asked to leave the room. Representatives of the news media are specifically directed not to report on or otherwise disclose any of the deliberations or anything said about these subjects during the executive session, except to state the general subject of the session as previously announced. No decision may be made in the executive session. At the end of the executive session, we will return to open session and welcome the audience back into the room. Then we'll hold a second meeting in conjunction or right after that. Second executive session under ORS one nine two dash six six oh two H, which allows the commission to meet in executive session to consult with counsel concerning the legal rights and duties of a public body with regard to current litigation or litigation likely to be filed. Once again, representatives of the news media and designated staff shall be allowed to attend the executive session. All other members of the audience are asked to leave the room. Representatives of the news media are specifically directed not to report on or otherwise disclose any of the deliberations or anything said about these subjects during the executive session, except to state the general subject of the session as previously announced. No decision may be made in the executive session. At the end of the executive session, we'll return to open session, welcome the audience back into the room. Okay, when, uh at the conclusion of the executive sessions, we will be come back into open session. And uh there's potential decision or action by the board of commissioners uh on items as a result of the executive session. So with that, we will now go into executive session.
Take a second just to
Okay, I'm gonna come out of the executive session and call the uh regular meeting, open meeting of the Moro County Commission to order. And we have one motion, the motion uh I'll make the motion to authorize county administrator and Moro County Weed Department to continue negotiations to find short term lease for the Moro County Weed Department and equipment based upon space and environmental needs for the Moro County Weed Department.
Second.
Well, it's been moved in second and any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Or some carry? Okay. Guess any other business to come to the commission today?
Just one comment, uh chair. Uh with the uh the faux pas of having the wrong Zoom uh recording uh started the first of the meeting, we will work. Uh I'm gonna have Valerie do a social media post just explaining what happened. And before we post the recording of the video, we will try to merge those two together to make sure that we have the full meeting on on video recordings. Okay, so.
Okay. Without all uh during the meeting.
And the social media posts already, yeah.
Yeah. Oh, thank you.